I think we're all right now. I don't think there's anybody missing, is there?
No. We're good.
You haven't got any, um, connections, have you?
I think Council Hughes. Council Hughes.
Oh. You're going to do that, aren't you? Good evening, everybody. Please settle down. It's coming up to seven o'clock. Right. Welcome to this... The Planning Committee. First of all, I have some emergency evacuation procedures to tell you about. In case of a fire, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately. Following the green fire exit signs out to the assembly point, which is by the war memorial in Duke Street. If anyone requires assistance, please let me know. Lifts should not be used. Please remain at the assembly point and do not attempt to return to the building until you've been advised that it's safe to do so. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but only the officers, the councillors and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please assure cameras are pointed only in this direction. Please, would you silence or switch off your mobile phones while the meeting is taking place? Thank you. Right, may I start with apologies for absence, please?
I've had apologies from Council Hughes.
Right, thank you. Declarations of interest. All members are reminded they must disclose any interests they know they have in the items of business on the meeting's agenda, and they must do so at this point on the agenda or as soon as they become aware of the interests.
Yes, please, Chair.
Moving on to...
I have a non-perpetual interest in relation to the Glebe Road transaction.
Glebe Road?
Yes, and I won't be speaking or voting.
Right, thank you very much. Right, moving on to the minutes of the meeting of 7th of February. Yes, Council Lily.
Thank you, Chair. I would like in addition to the minutes during the meeting on item six, there was discussion over the 106 agreement. David Green suggested that him and officers would go back and look at the amounts held in bonds over the road improvements and also with regards to how long and who owned what land with regards to education. That wasn't noted in the minutes and it was discussed in the meeting. So if that could be added, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. Are the officers happy with that extra point?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. In that case, including that point, are you happy that I signed the minutes? Thank you. Is everyone in favour? Yep. Okay, that's fine, thank you, Council Lily. There's a public question time now, but I assume that unless anyone says so, they're happy to wait until the item comes up before they speak. Maybe that one. There's always one. Thank you.
I'm not a porter, apparently tonight.
Okay. Right. Right. If no people need to speak now, we'll move on. Where an application is returned into committee that's been deferred for a site visit for further information or to consider detailed reasons for refusal, no further public questions or statements will be permitted. All valid questions and statements are published with the agenda before the start time and can be responded to at the meeting. Those who have submitted a valid question or statement will be entitled to put it in person at the meeting. Now then, we have a green sheet that came out quite late. Has everyone seen it? Anyone need more time? No? Okay, moving on then. Item six is land north of Southwoodham Ferrars Burnham Road. Sorry. Right.
It went around at about three o'clock by email.
Yep, I think I've got one. Right, thank you. Right, we'll move on then to the first application, as I said. Land north of Southwoodham Ferrars Burnham Road, Southwoodham Ferrars, Chelmsford. Can I have the officers' report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The application is for 200 homes. The proposal also includes other ancillary space such as open space and movement corridors. The application has been submitted in outline with all matters reserved except for access. The site is shown on screen here in red. It's mainly agricultural land and it's located to the north-west of Southwoodham Ferrars. The site sits between two roads. To the west is Willow Grove and to the road to the east is the B1418. This is part of an allocated site, strategic growth site 10 in the Chelmsford local plan, so the proposal will have to comply with the requirements of that policy. In accordance with the local plan requirements, a master plan for the site was approved by Cabinet in March 2021. You will recall at committee back in February that the committee considered a much larger application for the site, which is submitted by Countryside Homes, which was the area in blue. The proposal now is for the smaller part of the site, which is shown in purple, which has been submitted by Bellway. You will remember from the countryside application that the Secretary of State had issued a holding direction as they'd had a request from an MP to call the application in. We've received a decision from the Secretary of State on the 12th of April to say that they've decided not to call that application in and the decision letter from the Secretary of State is part of the green sheet. So what are we considering this evening? The principle of the development is already established by the application. We're considering compliance with the Strategic Growth Site Policy 10 and the access to the site and whether or not the scheme is able to sufficiently mitigate its own impacts. So on the screen here is the land use parameter plan. There are four parcels of residential land which are shown in the light orange colour. To the north-west is part of the strategic open space for the wider site and this will form part of that area for the rugby pitches. To the centre, you can see there's a children's play area and to the north-east are proposed allotments. The blue stars shown on there are the proposed Suds Basins, indicative proposal for where they would be. So here is a parameter plan for the building heights. The light blue is two-storey with about 35% of that area would be up to two and a half stories. The tallest buildings are three stories and these are located within the core of the site along the main spine road. So here is the movement parameter plan, which shows a good network of pedestrian cycle routes which would facilitate sustainable development, sorry, sustainable transport. The routes would connect up to the crossings that have already been permitted as part of the countryside application and this application is fully compatible with that countryside scheme. This drawing shows main access to the site, which would also be construction access. On the right is from the countryside application. Countryside need to build a new roundabout on the B1418, which will allow access to both their site and the Bellway.
Bear with us a minute, please, I think we need to change those microphones.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, it was going on and off.
These microphones are not very good.
No.
It only happens with planning committee. Genuinely.
Going back, so Countryside will need to build a new roundabout on the B1418, which you can see here with the red square. And this would allow access to both their site and the Bellway site. The drawing on the left is the detailed drawing of the connection between the countryside and the Bellway land and it shows the detail of the roads, the pedestrian and cycle routes and it shows segregated pedestrian and cycle routes off Carriageway. The scheme has a second minor access to the west of the site, which would be from Willow Grove. This is a private drive and it would only serve five properties. The drawing also shows a proposal to extend the pavement from Willow Grove up to and beyond the access. So as with the countryside application, the main concern from local residents has been the impact of the development on the local highway network. The transport assessment that was submitted for the countryside application assessed the impact of 1,200 dwellings, even though their application, the countryside scheme, was only for 1,020 dwellings. The proposal now is therefore using the transport assessment and modelling work that's already been carried out by Countryside and agreed to be acceptable by the Highway Authority. This development, the Bellway scheme, would bring the total number of dwellings on the growth site up to 1,220, so 20 units more than the transport assessment covers, but the Highways Authority have advised that the extra 20 dwellings is not significant and would not alter the overall necessary mitigation measures. The highway impact of the Bellway development has already been considered by the Planning Committee on the 7th of February when it considered the countryside application and found it to be acceptable. So the transport mitigation required has already been secured by the countryside application. This current application will help to fund those works and a 16.4% contribution towards those works will be secured through the Section 106 agreement. The 16.4% is calculated from the number of dwellings proposed, so in other words, the Bellway site is only 16.4% of the overall numbers of units on the strategic growth site. In addition to the combined works, this proposal would also provide a car club, similar to Countryside, and a good network of pedestrian and cycle links and a reserve contribution for further local highway improvements should they be necessary following monitoring. The Highways Authority have no objections to the application subject to conditions and a Section 106 agreement. Moving on to other matters. Reports have been submitted to show that the development would result in no more surface water runoff from the site than the existing situation. Reports have also been submitted to show that the development would not result in unacceptable impacts in terms of air quality, noise and biodiversity. The applicant has been working with Anglin Water separately on the foul drainage strategy and Anglin Water have confirmed that the proposed connection is acceptable and you'll note that from the green sheet. So moving on to the Section 106 obligations. The Section 106 would secure 70 affordable homes, which would include four wheelchair units, a revised mix on the affordable rent to provide more four-bedroom properties and a contribution would also be secured towards specialist residential accommodation. The scheme also includes allotments. There would be a contribution of £27,542 for Essex Rams.
Can you explain that, please, Rams?
So this is the Essex protection for the... Basically, there are protection areas on the coast and this is a combined Essex-wide contribution, so all new dwellings have to contribute a certain amount towards mitigating the impact of recreational disturbance on those protected sites near the coast.
Thank you.
The scheme would include a children's play area. As I said earlier, 16.4% of the cost of the Highways mitigation package that's already been secured under the countryside application. The proposal would secure contributions for education, which would be based on the final mix of units and these would be secured for early years, primary education, secondary education and post-16 education. The proposal includes an area of strategic open space, which would form part of the wider rugby provision. In accordance with the council's tree planting advice note, there would be three trees planted for every new dwelling, which would result in 600 trees and almost a million pounds towards reconfiguring the Crouch Vale Medical Centre. So running through the conclusions, this is an allocated site. It's in accordance with the approved master plan and the strategic growth site policy. It would be well-connected to the existing town. It's able to mitigate its own impacts and a range of obligations are secured through either conditions or Section 106 agreement. Our recommendation therefore is for approval, subject to conditions and Section 106. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, I think... I think we're ready now. We have a question from... Mr Oliver Milne?
Oh, correct.
Yes, councillor Porter.
Sorry.
Bear with me a minute.
Could we have clarification on the amount for the health?
Yeah, sorry, that was my mistake. It's 99,200 for healthcare, apologies.
Good to be exact.
Thank you.
Right, Mr Milne. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Oliver Milne from Savills and I'm the planning agent for the application. As you have heard, the application covers the last part of Strategic Growth Site 10 to come forward, with Countryside's larger application having been approved by this committee earlier in the year. The principle of development is established by the allocation of the site within the local plan and the approval of the site-wide master plan in 2021. Over the last three years, Bellway and their consultant team have worked together with your officers, officers at the county council and other key stakeholders to ensure that they design a scheme that will deliver the vision for the site. In accordance with both the allocation and the master plan, the scheme includes a significant quantum of green infrastructure that respects the existing landscape context. This includes green corridors, public open space and allotments, all of which will deliver a net increase in trees and a biodiversity net gain of at least 10%. Of the new homes, 35% will be affordable with a mix of affordable rent, shared ownership and first homes. All new homes, irrespective of tenure, will be built to a high quality and will be built to future home standards, meaning that will be no gas boilers. The scheme also includes an element of self and custom-built homes and a financial contribution towards specialist accommodation. Financial contributions towards education and health have also been secured to meet the demands of the new homes. Together with Countryside's application, Bellway's application completes the vision for the strategic growth site and will ensure the delivery of much-needed new homes, the necessary infrastructure and a significant quantum of new public open space. The scheme has been thoroughly tested and we are pleased that officers at both the city council and the county council have endorsed our assessments, leading to a very positive officer report with a recommendation for approval. This includes the support from the Highway Authority with a proportionate financial contribution secured towards the Highways works already approved through Highways and Countryside's application. I'd like to finish by saying that this is a scheme that we're all immensely proud of as a team. We hope that you'll be able to support your officer's recommendation this evening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We have no one until councillor Bentley. Councillor Bentley, you're welcome to speak now.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to apologize for the absence of my colleague councillor Roberts, who's sick, otherwise there'd be two of us and he'd ask some questions and I've got one question I want to add to it, but I'm gonna do all of them, if that's okay.
Thank you.
So, they're quite short. So, is there an overarching agreement to ensure that both developers follow the same specifications for site infrastructure to ensure consistency as there is in the Garden Village? Second question. Safe travel to school. It's a long way to the current Southwoodham Ferrars schools along and across busy roads. Without a new primary school on the site, this will lead to even higher car use at peak times right across Southwoodham Ferrars. We ask Essex County Council again to get and give permission to include the new school, thus allowing the developers and potential new residents the peace of mind that their young children will not have to go long distances to get to and from school. Third question. Construction of roads on site. Will they be of the correct specification to be adopted by the Highways Authority? We would prefer our future residents not to be saddled with an extra charge, given they already be... They will already be paying council tax for maintaining their roads. Question four. Green spaces. Will all green spaces on the site be transferred to Chelmsford City Council after the development has been completed? Question five. Maintenance charges. Will there be any in addition to council tax? And finally, number six. You mentioned, or the guy who was representing Bellway said there were no gas boilers. Is it going to be also the case that they will be off the gas grid completely and will they be built to low zero-carbon designs and heating standards? Thank you very much for your time.
You have no other statements to make?
No.
Okay, thank you. Well, I normally go back to the officers after the councillors have been spoken, so do you need a few minutes more to sort these out? I think many of them are already answered in the papers, but I'm sure...
Thank you, Chair. I think I've got all of those. So the first question was, is there an overarching agreement to ensure consistency? So the answer to that is no, there is not a combined Section 106 agreement, but the majority of the infrastructure works are required under the countryside scheme. So the countryside development would be providing, or Countryside would be providing all of the infrastructure works on-site, like the highway works, so they would be physically providing those and the Bellway development would be contributing towards those works. So they're secured through two Section 106 agreements, but they are intrinsically linked. The question regarding safe travel to school. So I mean, this part of this was covered last time at the February committee in terms of the provision of the new primary school, and I won't go over that again, but that is secured through the Section 106 agreement and obviously it would be for the education authority to tell us at that time whether or not it is needed. In terms of safe travel to school as well, you'll have seen from the presentation that this has good pedestrian and cycle links all through the site and that the two schemes are completely compatible with each other. The next question was in relation to the construction of roads on the site. My understanding is that yes, they would be adopted by the Highways Authority. Your next question was about green spaces and would they be transferred to Chelmsford City Council? The majority of the site would not be transferred to the council and they would be managed by the land trust. And my understanding is that the land trusts do charge a maintenance fee to the residents, but that would be buyer beware, so the buyers would be aware of that cost when they purchase those properties. That's with the exception of the strategic open space, so the element of, as I said in the February committee, which would be four rugby pitches, sports villan etcetera. So the strategic open space would be managed by Chelmsford City Council. Also, the allotments would be managed by the city council and on the countryside scheme, they were to be transferred to the town council, leased to the town council. The next question I have is in relation to gas boilers and there would be no gas on this site. The developer has confirmed there'd be no gas and that they are intending to build to future home standards. I think that answers all of your questions, unless I've missed anything.
Thank you. I mean, really, you're not supposed to be coming back with questions.
I'm just gonna thank you. Thank you for answering the question.
Fair enough, thank you. We can now open it to the committee to see what they say. Thank you. Who would like to start? Councillor Dobson.
Thank you, Chair. I've actually got four questions. The first one is paragraph 6.18. I've read this over and over and I'm not totally understanding it, so I would appreciate if you wouldn't mind just explaining what that is. The second one is paragraph 6.40. I'm sure Emma Featherstone will answer this one. The acronym MOVA, what that stands for, please. On page 47, just so that you can find it quickly, the response from Essex Fire and Rescue, they appear not to be terribly happy with the application and it seems to have been hidden within the main application, but whether that will come under reserve matters, I'm not sure, but perhaps you wouldn't mind just clarifying that. And lastly, what the reasoning is for the departure from the access arrangements, i.e. having a new access onto Willow Grove, because I believe that the original master plan did not have that and I wonder just really... There doesn't seem to be any background to that and I just wonder what the thinking was there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions along that lines before I go back? Councillor Porter, yes.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have any problem with this in principle. It's gone through various stages and it envisages homes that are needed. But I do have problems with the highway position and also with the number of properties proposed. My local plan refers to around 1,000 houses, so to some extent, Bellway's position has been preempted by 1020 already and we're adding another 200. Now, that is contrary to our plan. But moving on from that, my main concern emanates from our policy in paragraph 116 of the local plan. And that's repeated broadly speaking in the NPPF. It says the council is committed to cooperate with other councils and key organisations on strategic planning issues under their duty to cooperate. And it's the duty to cooperate with which I am concerned. We need to cooperate with Maldon District Council and with the developers of the proposed nuclear power site at Bradwillby. Both those schemes, and when I'm talking about Maldon, I'm referring in particular with their proposal to develop some 700 homes in... Close by. No, it's not Stonehenge, no. And that does not appear to have happened because I haven't seen any evidence of it. And I am very concerned that that increase in traffic from those potential sites has not been allowed for in the traffic assessment that we've heard about, not just tonight, but at the February meeting. So I don't believe we have that and I do not believe that the traffic assessment has taken into account the impact on the B1418 through Woodham Ferrars. I say that in particular because it has taken into account the impact upon Hawk Hill and Battlebridge and that is some miles away from here and yet Woodham Ferrars, going around that narrow double bend and past the local school, is something like 500 yards away and that seems to have escaped everybody's attention. So my application... My proposition, proposal even, is that this application be deferred to consider a robust traffic assessment, taking account of the proposed developments in Maldon and Bradwellby and secondly, the impacts of the B1418 through Woodham Ferrars. And secondly, the impacts of the B1418 through Woodham Ferris, neither of which have been addressed. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I won't take that at the moment because I think we need to answer councillor Dobson's questions as well as yours and then come back to what you said, okay?
Thank you, Chair. So if I start with councillor Dobson's questions. Paragraph 6.18. So basically, in the local plan viability study, there was no such thing as first homes at that point in time. So we assumed that on the shared ownership properties, they would have a 35% discount from the market value. The first homes legislation requires a 30% discount, so that's less. So what we're doing is recapturing that extra 5%. So that comes to us rather than the developer, in essence. The developer could choose, rather than paying that contribution, to discount 40% or 50%. They're the criteria from the government. They can either do 30, 40 or 50. They can't do 35. So that is why we're recouping that 5% difference. The MOVA, I will refer to my colleague from the highways authority. I think I know what it is, but I'll let Emma Featherstone answer that. The Essex Fire and Rescue comment, that did come in very early and they were talking about 45 metre distance from properties. The developer did note that and they then submitted an illustrative master plan, a second illustrative master plan, to show that the properties would be within 45 metres. So that has actually been overcome. We didn't get a revised consultation response from the highways authority on that. But remember, this is just an illustrative plan in any event. So when an application comes in at reserve matters, we'd make sure that it does comply. And then in relation to the new access on Willow Grove, you're quite correct, that was not part of the approved master plan. The application was actually amended during the life of the application so that it would only serve five properties. It's literally a private drive. So yes, it's not in the master plan, but because it's such a small number of dwellings, we don't consider that that would be problematic. I think that answers all of councillor Dobson's questions.
Okay. Is there anything councillor Poulter wanted to say before? Did you have a couple of questions in there hiding? Or are you happy to put that forward now? There are people with their hands up, so there may be other comments to have as well.
I'll just repeat my proposal, Chairman, if that will. I should say, the missing village in my, I couldn't remember, was Althorn or is Althorn. So my proposal this evening is to defer the application to consider a robust traffic assessment to be prepared, taking account of the proposed developments in Maldon and the potential development of Bradwell Bay and the impact on the B1418 through Woodham Ferris. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a second for that? Councillor Dobson. In that case, I'll take this to the vote and then we'll see. I need to take that first, I'm afraid, because of the situation. I can't hear you.
Surely we speak to the proposal before we vote on it? Surely we speak to the proposal, one way or the other, before we vote on it?
I'm happy we've got a second, so yes, okay, you can.
Yeah, I'd like to oppose this, although last time, as councillor Poulter will remember, he and I both proposed that the large application for countryside be deferred for further work on the highways assessment. Both of us were very unhappy then with the highways assessment, but the planning committee in its wisdom decided that it was adequate. What I think is clear to me is that this application does mitigate the effects that it has through its contribution and its plans for highways improvement. And I can't, I can't see any reason for deferring this for further highways assessment. Last time, I could. In future, I can see major upheavals, major uproar coming along the road as we try to consider in more detail the effects of Maldon, the effects of the power station, and indeed the effects of this development. So I think I'd like the highways authority to note that some of us and some of the South Woodham Town Council as well are exceedingly unhappy with the highways assessment that was done for the countryside proposal, which has been rolled into this one. And I don't think that we will stop voicing that concern as time goes on. But where we are now is looking at this particular proposal, which I think does mitigate its own effects, and that's what it has to do for us to be in favour of it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Lee, did you want to come in on that? No, okay. In that case, we'll go back to councillor Poulter. He has put a proposal, all those in favour of that proposal, three. All those against? In that case, that falls, so we go back to the normal application. Councillor Lee, did you want to come in now?
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Clarification on the transport assessment. It takes us to 2026. Just wondering what was the determination for that particular year? Because realistically, this development and the neighbouring development are going to be completed years after that. So I am confused as to why we believe all the traffic will be on the road by 2026 when in the real world it won't be? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else at the moment? Yes, councillor.
Officer question. You mentioned green spaces and you also mentioned the land trust. I'm not sure what you mean by the land trust. Is that a private company? The reason I ask that is that 20, 30 years onwards, if a company don't exist, then the residents come to the councils with trees that are, you know, need pollard in, shrubs, grass that needs cutting, because I know from experience that private companies wind up and no one else carries out the work. So the green spaces issue is something I need to clarify.
Thank you. Yes, councillor, I can't see you. Councillor Large, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I had a question about the contribution towards healthcare. And I was, my question really is about how the amount of money was decided upon, because it seems like quite a specific amount of money. So I was wondering whether, how that calculation was done.
And councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Chair. I very much appreciate all the other members of the committee who are trying to ask questions just to improve the application in a variety of areas. But overall, I think it's a really nice application to see allotments, green spaces, you know, off the gas network, all these things that, you know, we have to retrofit into other parts of the city. So overall, you know, I think it's a great type of development.
Thank you. I'll go back to the officers now with the answers.
Thank you. Councillor Ashley's question in relation to the land trust. Yes, it is a private company, but is it a charitable company? And the land trust, if you're familiar with the landscaping on Beale Park, the land trust manage that landscaping, so they are a well-established company. In relation to your concern about, you know, the company not doing what it's meant to do, we do have step-in rights as a council and that would be secured through the section 106 agreement. Councillor Large's question in relation to the contribution towards healthcare. So that figure has been derived from the NHS. So the consultation response that came from them did have a table within it to show how much floor space we'd need, how much floor space, how much that would cost to create that additional floor space and reconfiguration. So that figure, that specific figure has come from them. I think the other queries are highway-related.
Right, thank you. Can we? Sorry, Emma, you're right behind my screen, I can't see you.
Hello. Just to go back to councillor Dobson, your mover question, it is a microprocessor optimized vehicle actuation system. In short, it's a clever traffic light system. It loops down in the road and it detects the amount of traffic coming in each direction. And rather than having traditional signal timings, so each one's on X amount of seconds, it detects the amount of traffic, so it might shorten one green time and length in another to make the flows work better. So, okay? So it's an improvement. In relation to the other questions, I think the main one that comes up, and it come up before with the countryside scheme, is about this assessment and the 2026. And I do get the concern, but we have to remember the highway authority can only require the developer to mitigate their own development. We can't ask them to mitigate the issues that other traffic's going to make. So by them assessing to 2026 and looking at their whole development, they're not including as much other developments. It actually makes their development a bigger, a greater impact. Therefore, we can get a greater proportion of mitigation from them than if we, it would water it down if we looked at all the other development as well. And we possibly wouldn't be able to get as much mitigation. So it's, it's actually, although it doesn't seem it, it is a benefit to have done it this way. And we are comfortable with the mitigation package secured is a very strong package for the level of development. I don't think, was that, Sally, have I missed anything else out?
The B1418 query from councillor Poulter in relation to the traffic through Woodham Ferris.
Oh, okay, yeah. That, I think we covered that last time as well, that there is a contribution secured. If there were to be a problem, if there were, if traffic was to be causing an issue in the future as a result of the development, we can then call on the contribution. So Bellway are paying a proportional amount to that contribution and Countryside are paying, I think it's £450,000, off the top of my head, I can't remember. So if there is to be a problem there, there is money as backup to rectify that. But from the modelling that's been undertaken, the majority of traffic will be going along the B1012 and the A132 up to Reddenham.
Nice, thank you. Councillor Poulter.
Sorry, I didn't hear how much the contribution was.
Let me just double check before I tell you. Right, it's £400,000 from Countryside and I think it was £65,700 from the Bellway development.
Thank you.
Councillor Large.
Yeah, I just wanted to note on that, that's what we discussed in the previous meeting, that we'd like that number, that amount to be revisited and the, it'd be a bigger amount held in bond. And if all the assessment, the traffic assessments are fine, you know, it won't be needed. So it should, should be, if everyone's confident in highways assessment, it should be fine to increase that amount of money. Because actually, £400,000 or £465,000 isn't going to get you very much on a highways. So I think that's what we discussed in the previous meeting, yeah.
We certainly did discuss that. Do you want to come back on that?
That can form part of the section 106 negotiations for both developments. We haven't, they've not been finalised yet. I do take your point, but obviously, this is what we have negotiated to date and that's what we've had to go to put in front of planning committee.
So we can note that?
It's been noted down and yeah, we wait.
Okay, all right. Is there any other question lurking? Councillor Paulie.
A couple of things, Chair. Thank you very much. I wanted to pick up one of, one of the questions from the local councillor about the school, which was also discussed last time. And I think it's another issue on which we will continue to bang heads with the county council. Because we clearly think, and the local residents clearly think, that there is more than enough justification to decide now that that school is necessary, which would reassure the population, which would enable the development all to be done at the same time and would enable the education authority itself to be planning more accurately than if it's waiting until the last minute before it's able to decide whether a school is necessary or not. We did discuss it last time. We agreed the application last time, so we can't vote against it on those grounds this time, in my opinion. But I do think the county council should be aware that there are ongoing concerns from this committee, not just about highways assessments, but also about the delay in deciding upon educational requirements. So that was one thing I wanted to say. Second thing I wanted to say is that I am also, as councillor Sampson was saying, I'm very taken with this particular application. I think it stands well in its own, in its own feet. I think it's a great shame, as we also said last time, that these applications relating to a particular strategic site didn't come forward at the same time. Because we could have saved time tonight, we could have saved time last time, we could have seen the whole thing in much better perspective and be more confident in our own decision-making apart from anything else. So I have a question related to that, and that is whether the construction of the two parts of the strategic site are likely to happen at the same time. Because we've had the most amazing situation with the Persimmon development, haven't we, in Broomefield, where half of it was done by Countryside and then the other half was done by Persimmon? And the two halves were not coordinated. There are ongoing debates about the rights and wrongs of that situation and the future of some of the commitments which one or other of the developers supposedly made. And so I would like to think that the development of this overall strategic site will take place simultaneously. So I do have some reservations, as you can hear, and some ongoing things which I think are going to cause issues. But on balance, I think this is a very good application and I want to see us get on with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Are you happy to note that information as well?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Well, last, I'm not sure whether I should allow you, but carry on, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to clarify councillor Poulter's point about duty to cooperate. I don't think that was answered. I'd just like to assure him that yes, duty to cooperate goes on all the time with our neighbouring councils and it certainly did in this particular instance as well. Of course, we can't always predict what's going to happen, particularly with a council like Maldon, which doesn't have a local plan. And so unpredictable developments seem to be coming forward. And also, there's no certainty about the Bradwell Power Station either, which could be many, many years away if indeed it ever happens. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Right, if there are any, thank you, that was very useful. I'll move on then to the application. That's the director of Sustainable Communities, subject to the 106 agreement, as indicated in the report, that the director of Sustainable Communities be authorised to grant the application, subject to the conditions on pages 22 to 40 of the report. I have a second. All those in favour? Thank you. All those against? Do we have numbers? Yes, in that case, that is carried. Thank you very much, everyone. Right, we'll now move on to item seven. This is Mushroom Cottage, Parsonage Lane, Little Badde, CM34SU. Right, just waiting for everyone to settle. Okay, can I have the officers' report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Right, so the application site lies in the rural area of Little Badde and is accessed from Parsonage Lane. The proposal is to extend the outbuilding upwards that sits forward of the main house. The proposal is to extend the outbuilding upwards that sits forward of the main house. The outbuilding is indicated by a red star on the images on the slide. The existing outbuilding is a small building, single storey. It currently has a garage and a storeroom. And due to its small scale, the outbuilding appears as an established domestic outbuilding in the setting of the existing dwelling. The proposed extension would add first floor accommodation over the entire footprint of the building to provide a carer's flat. The extension would have a pitch roof with three large dormer windows with heaped gables. The maximum height of the extended outbuilding would be about six metres. The proposed extension would fundamentally change the scale of this outbuilding and would create a substantial detached and two-storey building in place of a subservient outbuilding. Also, the position of the outbuilding in front of the main dwelling would result in this outbuilding dominating the site when viewed from the lane. The altered relationship between the two buildings would not be compatible with the form of the development characteristic in this rural area. And for these reasons, the proposal would result in harm to the rural character of Parsonage Lane. There were two similar schemes considered and dismissed at appeal in 2013 and 2016 for extensions to the outbuilding. In both cases, the proposed first floor extensions to the existing outbuilding were considered to significantly increase the scale and bulk of the building, resulting in a large and two-storey detached building rather than a subservient outbuilding. The Plough inspectors noted that, due to the proximity to the lane, the outbuilding would have dominated the plot, blocking the views towards the main house. This was considered to be out of keeping with the prevailing character of the street scene. The current scheme, whilst of a slightly different design, proposes the same type of increase to the scale of the outbuilding and the change to the relation between the main house and the existing outbuilding. So in conclusion, the addition of the first floor over the existing domestic outbuilding would significantly increase the height, scale and bulk of this building, resulting in a large detached two-storey building rather than a, rather than an outbuilding and still reaching the main house. The proposed enlarged building would be out of keeping with the context of the surroundings and would detract from the character of the application plot, as it would be overly prominent and visible from Parsonage Lane. And this would be contrary to our policies, the M11 of the local plan, and our recommendation is to refuse the proposal.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have just councillor Scott to speak.
Okay. As you will see from the last plans, the building has been brought down. It is also just a good point to make that the house is actually back to front, and what you're really seeing is a garage. And because the front of the house, it was all turned around, and the front of the house is actually, there is no land, so the house was completely turned around, so the back garden appears as the front garden. And what is, what these residents are trying to do is put a, another, another setting above the existing garage and the storeroom, another to make into a property. And if I get the opportunity, I'll explain what the property is for. But it is actually the garage. And that has been confirmed also with the parish council as well, that that is actually back-to-front house. So really, and I'm not quite sure when the good lady over there said that it doesn't fit with the house itself, it will still be lower than the house itself because it goes down on a slant, so it will be lower, the whole building will be lower than the house itself, Mushroom Cottage.
Right. Thank you. Can you turn your microphone off?
Yeah, but I do want to also explain what this is for.
All right, thank you. I'll show you if finished, Chair. Right, thank you. I'll admit to the committee, councillor Wright.
Yeah, I know this site very well, and I believe the applicant attended a meeting with the planning officers prior to submitting the application. And I also understand that they did not comply with all your suggestions. Could you tell the committee in what way the applicant did not comply?
Right, that is correct. There was a pre-application meeting with the applicant and his agent. I have explained to them why we couldn't support this proposal. So actually, before the current proposal in front of you, there was another one for exactly the same proposal, which was withdrawn after our recommendation for refusal, which we said that we will issue. And following that, we had the pre-application meeting. I have suggested how they can extend the building to achieve the space that they need for the carer's flat. And I understand they haven't taken that on board.
Thank you. I'm assuming that you have to look at the application as it is, of course. Councillor Wright, you wanted to come back?
Yeah, mitigating circumstances, of course, are about the occupant, who I can confirm is seriously disabled. And there is no doubt does require living help 24/7. And I'm not so sure that this particular building with the design, we could actually say that it affects the intrinsic beauty of the area. However, having looked at previous applications, which have gone to appeal on two occasions, I cannot find any reasons to support the application and go against the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Sampson.
I agree with what you were saying about how it affects the intrinsic sort of beauty of the area. That one photo we saw, we can't see the rest of the lane, for those of us that aren't familiar with the lane. What I can see is, you know, a really big wall behind which there's a really big house, and having another large building, I mean, without seeing the rest of the lane, it's hard for me to tell how that's going to impact the area. And I think to the point of previous things have been refused, it was quite a few years ago, and, you know, norms do change and understanding of, you know, housing needs do change. So I think having been refused in the past isn't a good enough reason alone to understand why this particular building will have a really detrimental effect on the rest of the lane and the area.
Thank you. Councillor Pooley.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think the, I can sympathise with councillor Sampson's point. I used to live in Little Badde and know the lane as it was then very well, but it may indeed have changed to certainly, and this wall was not there in my recollection, so it clearly has changed. I think the only way in which councillor Sampson's concerns might be overcome would be to have a site visit and to assess the surrounding lane and see whether it does affect it. Personally, I think it does. I think it's very unfortunate that the planning officers have recommended a way forward which would have accommodated the necessary use. We didn't get a chance to hear from councillor Scott as to what the intended use was, and why the carer required such a large accommodation. But it seems to me that that's not the view of the planning officers. It's very clear to me that this would be an exception to policy. If we wanted to make that exception to policy, we would have to satisfy ourselves that it doesn't affect the intrinsic beauty of Parsonage Lane, and so a site visit would be necessary. Personally, I don't think I need it, but there we go.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Yes? Yes, sorry, Richard Carrion.
Thank you, Chair. Just looking at the plans that have been laid before us, nothing much has changed. And the outcome, I think, is to be the same, because nothing much has changed, quite simply for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Large.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I appreciate that there is a specific reason in this case for wanting to convert the garage into a dwelling for a carer. But as is noted in the report, then that, that changes the building forever. However, even though that's, that need won't be there forever. And so I, I agree really with the refusal recommendation, because as well, when you look at the previous applications that were turned down and then, that was agreed on appeal, it isn't different, really. And if there are ways that they can apply, if they've been given advice, and they've, they could take that on board and then apply, put in an application that actually will be accepted, I think that would be a way forward for the applicant. I also, I did want to ask a question about 6.6, because the brick wall comes up there. It says, the character of the area has not changed since that time, talking about the previous applications, despite the fact that brick walls and taller gates have now been installed at the application site for which there is no planning history. So is the implication there that those things, so there has been a change in the viewpoint, but those things would be expected maybe to be coming through planning if you were going to change that, or is that something that would be fine to change without a planning application?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you. I was going to say very much the same as councillor Large, about the use of it not being, necessarily going to be continued, that that building would still be there. And also with regard to the fact that we haven't seen photographs of the rest of the area, but you can see on the plans and the map that it does very much be scattered, and that adding that to the one house here would make a huge difference to the overall scale of development in that area, over a wide area. So I would agree with the recommendations from those two points of view.
Thank you.
No, I don't know the process, so I did, was trying to say, I'd like to say something else, but I don't know the process, so I was continuing. There's quite a bit more I had to say, Chair. That's all right. Thank you very much. First of all, the people that live in the property, the reason they would like a separate property for the carer is because they would wish for a quality carer. So, and a reason is that they have looked at carers in the past. Nobody wants to live actually in the house, or they won't keep that person in the house. Mr Cornell is getting older. Mr Cornell is getting older, and it's becoming more difficult. In answer to the last two councillors, they are quite happy, should anything happen to Mrs Cornell, that they are quite willing and would agree something legally, that that extension to the property will be taken down again. But it is simply because the woman is deteriorating, and that it is quite concerning that they are two people in their 70s, and, yes, social services are involved, et cetera, but to keep her in her home and to get quality care, this is what they require. So the conclusion really is a comfortable home for a quality carer who will stay, because they're basically being given something where they are, they would be happy to continue working with this good lady. And that's all I've got to say on the matter. I can't say any more.
Thank you, sorry. I believe that it's not possible to put a condition in for the demolition of alterations, is it?
I think that probably goes against all, you know, planning protocol. It would be very unreasonable to make someone knock down bricks and mortar, you know, just way to do things. Sorry, councillor Wright, can you hear me now? Yes. Councillor Lee asked whether it would be possible to put a planning condition on, to ask for something to be knocked down when it was no longer required. I mean, that's quite an unreasonable planning condition, goes against the whole grain, really. You can't reasonably expect someone to knock down bricks and mortar a few months after or a few years after they've built it. It's just not something we would do.
I don't think what councillor Scott said changes my overall view here. Clarification, though, I think it is possible, although it's not possible to write something saying, well, knock it down. It is possible to tie the ownership of a property on an ongoing basis to the main house, although sometimes the planning officers have said that that's a weak thing and it'll all too easily overturned in the fullness of time. But I think that would be as far as one could possibly go in that direction. But I think that where we are at the moment is, we have a, we have an understanding gap. I don't, I sympathise, of course, with the need. I don't believe that the need is a planning consideration in any case. But having, but having said that, I don't see that we can have a sense of whether this particular property is needed for, to accommodate one person in the context of a largish house, which is presently occupied by a married couple. So we don't have any evidence here to say that it's a reasonable suggestion, in my opinion. But I don't think that there's any planning reason in any case. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm presuming that if it were possible to have such a condition, it'd also be possible subsequently to make an application to remove the condition, so we'd then be back where we started from.
Thank you, Chair. So this is an application for 12 affordable apartments on the Glebe Road car park site. This involves the removal of the existing 6D long-stay car parking spaces, which are operated by Chanceller City Council. Works associated with the development include moving the access position, introducing some parking for new residents, and landscaping. The site is owned by the city council, and the application is made by the council's corporate property team, hence why this application is presented to the committee tonight, in accordance with the council's constitution. So here's the application site outlined in red. It's part of the city centre, very near to the bus and train stations and other facilities, as outlined in the officer report. as outlined in the officer report. The site is part of the West End Conservation Area, which comes up as far as Glebe Road. I'm not sure when the photo was taken, because the car park looks a little bit empty, but it has been confirmed with the council's parking operations team that the car park does operate to around eighty percent of its capacity on average. Obviously, there'll be times when that's that fluctuates, so there'll be times when it's when it's full up as well. The site is rectangular in shape, with frontage to Glebe Road. Not to the east, not actually shown in the image, but highlighted in yellow here are a pair of recently built semi-detached houses, fronting on to Glebe Road. To the south is Steamer Terrace, or one part of Steamer Terrace. These properties are oriented with side apartment to the bottom of the application site. And somewhat usually, they don't have road, direct road access, they rely on the alleyways for foot access to their front doors. A little further south are the properties fronting on to Townfield Street. To the west are properties facing towards the application site, with their parking areas sited to the rear of the buildings and private footway connection to their front from Glebe Road. To the north of the site, on the opposite side of Glebe Road, is Eastwood House Car Park. That's a site allocated through the local plan for housing, and benefits from planning permission to build one hundred and ninety-seven new apartments in blocks of three to seven stories. Routing between local properties to the rears of gardens in the most part are a network of footways or alleyways, which connect Glebe Road, Steamer Terrace, and Townfield Street. And so these are just some photos of the site and its surroundings, as is. So at the top is the current site viewed from Glebe Road. As you can see, it's a straightforward surface car park, a little bit busier there, with narrow edge into front. And you can see the existing access to the car park on the left left-hand side of that image. And then along the bottom, from left to right, we've got the recently built semi-detached houses to the east of the site. These are two stories. Second image along shows the properties to the west of the site, and these are a mix of houses and apartments, with scale ranging between two and three stories. The next image along shows a view towards Steamer Terrace across the western edge of the site. And finally, a view along Steamer Terrace from the south, towards the application site. It's a little bit hard to make out from the image, but there is a wall at the end of that footpath separating it from the application site. And this application does not propose to remove that wall, so that would remain a segregated section of pathway serving those properties. And so here is the site layout as as proposed. What I'm going to do, just to make it a little bit easier to see its situation on screen, is just to fill that in. So it's an L-shaped building which creates a frontage to Glebe Road and a return back towards Steamer Terrace, but with a set away from the existing properties to the west. This leaves a landscape zone to the west, which is an opportunity for tree planting and other soft landscaping, which provides a good setting for local properties and meets the vista along Glebe Road, with a positive green feature. Just on screen there, the difference between the shading, the the two shades of green. The darker shading is what's inside the red line, so that's the landscaped area as proposed. And then the lighter shading there is the the front garden space and pathway of the existing properties, which is outside of the red line. And the exact landscaping content will be controlled by condition, but as you can see, the intention is to plant a a number of trees as part of the development. This arrangement of buildings is what's known as a perimeter block approach, meaning you maximise positive active frontage to street, with the placement of building and 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 then you contain the parking and private amenity space to the rear, in some form of courtyard. And as you can see, within the courtyard proposed here, there are six parking spaces to serve the twelve apartments, which is an acceptable level of provision within such a central location, particularly with such close proximity to public transport. A total of eighteen cycle spaces will also be provided. The local highway authority has no objections to this ratio of provision. As you can see from this illustration, the part of the building which has windows facing south is over fifteen metres from the nearest property boundary. This meets the local plan remoteness standard. From this illustration, you can see there's an eleven point eight to twelve point eight metre variable remoteness between frontages to the west. This is an acceptable remoteness to be achieved between public building faces, this relationship being akin to a street environment. But you might otherwise have buildings situated either side of a road or other highway feet fronting on to each other. And with many examples of streets in Chelmsford, where the public faces of buildings front each other a similar distance or even more closely. Daylight assessment also confirms there would be no material impacts on neighbouring properties from the development. The elevations show that the building will have a Georgian architectural style, presenting a three-storey frontage to Glebe Road, which reduces to a two-storey range on the return towards Steamer Terrace. The scale range is in keeping with contextual building heights, and follows the scale range as set out within the Adopted Making Places SPD for this part of the city centre, and three stories matches the scale of the approved development on the opposite side opposite side of the road on the Eastwood House allocation site, which already benefits from planning permission. This shows the elevation facing south towards the courtyard area of the development and towards Steamer Terrace. And as you will recall from the earlier slide, this elevation is fifteen and a half metres away from the nearest neighbour's boundary. But this is considered a private-to-private relationship. So as proposed within the application and to be controlled by planning condition, the first and second floor windows in this elevation, which are to serve corridors and bathrooms, will be obscure glazed and unopenable below a height of one point seven metres from internal floor level. That adheres to Appendix B of the local plan. And just to to cover this, the the side wall facing directly on to Steamer Terrace doesn't contain any windows, as shown there. So a quick look at the infrastructure associated with the application. The scheme, as we know, is for twelve affordable apartments. These would fall into the affordable rent typology and would be retained as local housing stock in perpetuity. And as you can see, there's a mix of one and two bedroom unit sizes. There's a need for local open space contribution in lieu of onsite provision. This is a standard on smaller sites where it's not feasible to include functional open space, and a contribution has been calculated based on the planning obligations SPD. Likewise, a contribution towards the Rams ecological mitigation has been agreed based on prevailing rates. And in this case, because the site is owned by the council, there is no Section 106 agreement. The affordable housing would be secured by the scope of the decision, and there would be an internal transfer between council departments for the two financial contributions. That's been secured by written undertaking with the corporate property team, and has been done so in liaison with the council's legal service. And so I know there's there's some neighbour comments to be to be looked at tonight, so I wanted to focus on some of the other issues that have been raised, that probably aren't going to come up, or may not come up during the the course tonight, but that have been raised locally. So loss of the long-stay car park. The decision to close the car park for development is a decision that's been taken by the council as landowner prior to submitting the application, meaning the car park is already scheduled for closure irrespective of tonight's decision on the plan application. The planning assessment, however, looks at the proposed use of the site, which is residential, and that's contextually appropriate to the area, so that's acceptable. In terms of any impact arising from the displacement of car parking or existing parking need, there are several existing car parks offering long-stay parking, all within very close proximity, and which are accessible via well-lit, public, well-traveled pedestrian routes, which are well-surveyed by CCTV. And these have spare capacity more than adequate to accommodate any level of displacement from the site. New residents seeking parking permits, the issue relating to concern from local residents that they already have difficulty finding parking spaces within the controlled parking zones, particularly close to their homes. And and the concern being that if residents from new developments were to obtain parking permits, this would make the situation worse. This is something that comes up quite frequently on city centre development proposals. And as as the committee know, parking is controlled by a separate body, the South Essex Parking Partnership. Whilst we can't stop new residents from making applications for permits, we know that permits are not being issued to new new addresses by that body that controls the parking, due to the existing level of demand that there is. That's been the case for quite some time for developments in Chelmsford. So whilst not within our direct control or the control of this planning decision, the decision is is addressed in effect as as residents of the new development would not get permits even if they applied under that current policy. And looking at parking and traffic generation, what you said, fifty percent provision in such a central location is acceptable to both the local planning and local highway authorities. There's no policy justification for increasing parking and thus car ownership within the city centre. Increasing parking provision only generates more road traffic, which again is counterproductive to achieving more sustainable patterns of travel from new developments, particularly those in such sustainable locations. The network is able to accommodate the level of traffic associated with the development. And then looking finally at public safety within the alleyways, this relates to alleged drug-related activities and other antisocial behaviour taking place within the alleyways. This issue was already on the council's radar when it was raised. The council's Safer Communities team have been discussing the issue with Essex Police, I understand, and have been looking at ways they might be able to help. This development proposal doesn't create the issue, and it doesn't make the situation worse. In fact, the development increases the level of passive surveillance in the area generally, which is a positive outcome. Under the planning system, the development cannot be held liable for that existing issue. But the council's Safer Communities team, as I say, are already aware of the issue, and will be looking at possible solutions outside of the planning process. And so to conclude, there is a full officer report setting out all of the considerations. Local comments have been have been made, they have been taken into account, but the development is found to be in compliance with the local plan and is acceptable. The recommendation is to approve the application subject to the conditions listed in the officer report. Thank you.
Thank you. We object on behalf of numbers seven, eight and nine Glebe Road. These homes are immediately to the west of the application site. They are separated from the site by a narrow walkway. The application site is a surface car park which allows the homes to receive light to the front rooms. The homes are terraces and to the front are kitchens on the ground and bedrooms on the first floor. They only have modest windows to the front facing the application site. As the homes have limited principal windows, half of which faced towards the application site, the impact of the development on these homes needs to be carefully considered. Policy DM twenty-three of the local plan states that development must be compatible with its surroundings, having regard to scale, sitting and form. The proposal fails to respect the immunity of the homes to the west because of overlooking an overbearing impact and by increasing the possibility of crime in the area. The new development has a three-storey section fronting Glebe Road. This is to be some ten point three metres high and will be twelve and a half metres from the homes to the west. The new development will take light from the existing homes and have an overbearing impact because of the height and its proximity to the existing homes. The three-storey section will impact on the principal rooms and windows of the homes to the west, and should be reduced in height. There are large windows high in the north-west elevation of the new development. The occupants of seven, eight and nine are particularly concerned about the loss of privacy into their first-floor bedroom windows from homes only twelve metres away. Currently, these rooms these rooms are private, so any loss of privacy will have a significant impact. The application should be amended to remove this overlooking. Number seven, eight, nine are accessed from a narrow walkway which leads to a dead end. There's been antisocial behaviour in the walkway. Currently, the open aspect of the car park provides views of the walkway and increases security. An open aspect should be maintained, with good surveillance rather than overlooking of private windows. The proposal does not comply with Policy DM twenty-three, and so should be refused or amended to better protect the immunity of the residents to the west of the application site. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. I I would like to speak in favour of the objections raised by the resident of number seven, eight and nine Glebe Road. The resident have been supportive of the new development, understanding full well the need of the more need of more homes in the city. There are two things that I would like to draw your attention to. First, the existing houses to the west of the proposed development. These houses are two-up, two-down houses, two-story buildings, with their kitchen and first-floor bedroom facing the development. They have limited access to sunlight due to already limiting windows in the existing buildings. Secondly, the proposed development site is at a very close distance to these houses. The three-story proposed development will not only obstruct the sunlight to the existing houses, but they will also be intruding into their privacy. I can see that the development proposes a green landscape frontage, but this is no compensation for the loss of open space frontage and access to the light that the residents enjoy presently. As mentioned by Mr Barker here, Policy DM twenty-three of the twenty twenty Chelmsford Local Plan states that development must be compatible with its surroundings, having regards to scale, sitting, form, architecture, material boundary treatments and landscape. I would request this committee to reconsider reconsider the front elevation of the new development and keep it similar to the sizes of the existing houses on the road to maintain privacy and access to sunlight for all the residents. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. I've just put a a new slide on screen that just helps to talk to to some of these points. So the remoteness that you can see there between the frontages, maybe I should explain actually, this this slide represents a a modelled, a three D model of the of that relationship. So on the left-hand side is the the application as proposed. This is to scale, by the way, so those relationships. I think this has got to be a record. So hopefully you heard me up to where I think you heard me up to. So this is a model. The ratio of building heights here is is relative to the the space that you're looking at there. So that eleven point eight to twelve point eight variable distance is is shown on on the slide. So all all three of these, these concerns that relate to privacy, overbearing, light impacts, they all all essentially come down to the same same point of the assessment, which is the the remoteness between the frontages. So looking first at at privacy, these are are public frontages, public faces of the building. They're not the same as the private side of the building, where you would have greater expectation of maintaining privacy. Where you do have the rear faces of of buildings, you do have standards that are applicable, minimum standards of remoteness that you have to achieve. That's all set out in Appendix B of the local plan. For for front-facing elevations, the public side of the building, you don't have minimum standards, because there isn't that same expectation of of privacy. However, obviously, what we want to do is look at the the impact that proposals do have. Typically, what you have when you have fronts of buildings, you are looking at a street, a street setting. So you might have two two sets of buildings fronting on to each other, they might have a road in between and footways, etc. And typically, that de facto sets the minimum standard that can be achieved or can be reasonably set between properties. Now, the minimum standards of, or minimum size standards typically relate to the to to highway infrastructure, mean that on occasions you can come down as low as eight metres between frontages and quick scouts around the city or Chelmsford. And I've found plenty of examples where that is the is the case, and those those properties coexist quite quite comfortably. We've got properties in Chelma Village which are only eight metres away. We've got Old Mulsham, which is eight, nine, ten metres remoteness. You've got a scheme that's come through the planning committee, Hardy Hardy Close, which some of you may remember, which is just off of Cobal Lane, that's about sort of about five years ago. And that's got remoteness between frontages of around eight metres, eight point two metres. So typically So typically, this can be acceptable in other situations. But what we've got here is a situation where we've got eleven point eight to twelve point eight metres remoteness. And added to that, we've got the opportunity to introduce some landscaping in that intervening space and that could be structural landscaping, so trees where you've got a bit of a filter to that view path. So remoteness is key to this. And as I say, there are examples where we, you know, we are going to see, we are seeing less remoteness. So sustaining the grounds for refusal on that basis would be incredibly difficult because that relationship already exists in the city. Looking at overbearing, and just to explain the image here, you've got forty-five degree, you take a forty-five degree line to look at the impact of overbearing, so the impact of a building in close proximity to a neighbouring site. And that's derived from Essex Design Guide and BRE guidance and it's part of our Appendix B of the local plan. What you can see here on screen are those two forty-five degree lines that have been taken from the frontage of the building. And they do not intersect the proposed structure, so there's no cause for overbearing, that wouldn't be a justification for refusal. Similarly, the twenty-five degree lines on screen, that relates to the light impact, potential light impact. And again, I've taken two lines, so one from the two-storey section of the existing buildings and one from the three-storey section of the existing buildings. So the line that's actually in the background, the top line of the two twenty-five degree lines, that's going, that's oversailing the two-story element of the proposed structure. So that's not an intersection, that goes right above it, so there's no impact on light there. What you do have in relation to the three-story structure is an intersection, right at the top of the building. But what you do have also there is the roof form sloping away from that intersection and allowing light to come through. Now, the BRE guidance, which is where this twenty-five degree line comes from, is the industry standard to what you look at. But what that actually states is that an intersection isn't grounds for refusal. An intersection is just means to look at that relationship a little bit more closely and decide whether locally that's appropriate. As I say, what we've got here is a very marginal intersection right at the top of the building with the roof slope facing away from that intersection, allowing light to continue on. So that level of intersection wouldn't be grounds for refusal in any event. But what the BRE also state is that the, where you do, in whatever situation that occurs, you have to take situational circumstances into account as well. Now, we're in the city centre where light impact is going to have, where there isn't going to be the same expectation of maintaining light to adjacent properties. So whilst we are in a conservation area and whilst we don't want to see that light impacted by excessive degrees, this isn't an excessive degree of light impact and we are in the city centre. So on balance, there wouldn't again be the rationale to consider this would be reason for refusal. Sorry, I've dragged that out a little bit Chair, but that needed a bit more explanation, I think.
A question please. Does condition three mean the right to buy proposals don't take effect?
If condition three relates to affordable housing and the twelve affordable housing units in accordance with the MPPF, which I hope he does. Yes, so basically, because this is an affordable, a hundred per cent affordable, sorry Chair, I didn't get invited to talk then, just realised, is that okay? Yeah, because it's a hundred per cent affordable scheme, yeah, that doesn't apply, so there's no right to buy, these are affordable rent in perpetuity.
Thank you, I am very encouraged. I support the application entirely.
Thank you Chair. Regarding provision of health and wellbeing of residents that are in there, is there facilities nearby that are going to take on new patients?
Yeah, so, yeah, so all of the surgeries, so all the primary healthcare within the city centre, they're not closing lists. We all know there's a huge weight on the NHS and on our local surgeries and we are looking at ways that they can be improved and improve capacity. But none of those local surgeries have closed their lists and the nearest surgery to this site would be the Rivermead Gate surgery, which is about four hundred and fifty metres to the north.
Thank you Chair. I know this is not a debate in terms of whether this gets approved or not, but buried in the application is the fact that these are all hopefully going to have solar panels and heat pumps and a really good building standard in terms of environment, which is obviously great for everyone, but it's especially great for people who need affordable housing, they're the people that need the most help with their bills. So it's really great to see that the stuff that the council is building, you know, is coming with such high quality. Thanks.
Thank you Chair. Question with regards to parking. Three point three, six parking spaces are provided for the twelve units. Fully appreciate that in a city centre location, we can have the reduced parking. But it does say these would be offered on an unallocated basis. How does that work? Because obviously we don't want seven cars trying to fill six parking spaces. How does unallocated parking work on a scheme like this?
Yeah, so unallocated parking simply means that at the planning stage, you don't fix parking spaces to units. And the simple reason for that is because of the nature of the development that we're talking about. Different needs will emerge over time, so it's an evolving thing. So this will be managed by a governing landlord and a registered provider perhaps. And it would be for them to decide who qualifies for the parking spaces. And it would be those that manage the level of parking that's available, so there's not an oversubscription of parking. So incoming residents are fully aware that they either have a space or they don't have a space.
Thank you. I think the officer just answered my question just at the end there. I was going to ask you who the most likely landlord would be, because I was assuming a housing association. So you mentioned a landlord, but are the chances are we've got a housing association? The reason being that a lot of the people come off the council waiting list, one would assume, which affordable housing works like that, so.
Yeah, in truth, in truth, I can't answer that. The expectation is that there would be an RP involved, but it's for the council to decide how it's going to manage the project, the housing going forward. But, you know, I would expect an RP to be involved at some point.
Thank you Chair. I'll keep it short. I just, I really wanted to just kind of acknowledge that it's good to see an application like this coming through for affordable rent in the city centre. It's something that the city really needs. I understand the concerns of the neighbours, but from a planning point of view, I don't see a reason, that it's a strong enough reason to say we shouldn't approve this application. And yeah, that's it really. Thank you.
Chair, before we start, I might just check the microphone at the back of the, of the, yep.
Yeah, thank you Chair. So this application seeks permission for the erection of a single-story side extension and two-story rear extension to the existing dental surgery of Farah's Dental Lab. The application site is an established dentist surgery located within the urban area of Chelmsford and highlighted here by the red line. The site is a corner plot to the east of Pump Lane. Hello, okay. The site is an established dental surgery following permission granted in nineteen ninety-four and has since been serving the Chelmsford community, including NHS patients. This application today follows a previously refused application with the same built form. However, the proposal did not include sufficient parking at the time. On screen, we have the existing and proposed block plan. The stars indicate the new development. The two-story extension would have a depth of five metres across the existing two-story element and the single-story would replace the existing single-story as shown. As existing, the car park has twenty-one spaces. It has an awkward layout which makes manoeuvring into and out of spaces difficult. The spaces currently range in width sizes between two point two metres to two point four. As a minimum, we would seek two point five. The depths are also below our minimum standards and have a length of four point five metres. The proposed rearrangement of the car park provides twenty-two spaces. All spaces would have a minimum dimension of two point five metres by five metres in length. The stars show the dedicated staff car parking spaces, which would occupy the harder-to-reach and accessible spaces. The manoeuvring space would be extended to six metres between the top and bottom spaces. Cycle parking would also be provided as an additional provision. The removal of the existing tree will enable the additional space in the car park. The proposal, sorry, I've got the wrong page. For the impacts on neighbouring amenity, the two-story extension would bring the dentist closer to number one Anvil Way, but maintain over eight metres with a single-story garage between the two. With the presence of the garage and the distance between maintained, the extension would not be considered overbearing. The windows within the first floor would offer increased views, therefore we have attached a condition for it to be obscure glazed and restricted opening. As well as this, to ensure the dental surgery does not exceed acceptable noise levels, a condition has also been included concerning noise insulation to the proposed plant room. Condition A is also attached for, which requires the windows for the north-facing treatment rooms and staff rooms to be closed during operational hours. To conclude, subject to the conditions mentioned previously, the proposal would maintain an acceptable relationship with all its neighbouring properties, relate well to the property and the surrounding area and provide more suitable and sufficient parking. Therefore, it's recommended for an approval.
I'd like to thank you, Madam and members of the council for allowing me to speak this evening. As I see it, there's two aspects to this application, and one is access and one is parking. I share the concerns of the local residents about parking. And to this end, we've had extensive discussions with the highways department to ensure that we fully comply, we make the necessary changes. To this extent, we've already acquired land to the side and the back of the practice and we would propose to take away parts of the grassed area to create more spaces. With regard to the other aspect, which is access, I think we are all aware that there is a serious dental access problem for NHS care. And we are talking about improving and adding NHS surgeries here. The first would actually give access for general dentistry. And secondly, more importantly, we propose access for orthodontics. Four years ago, they took away the orthodontic practice in Brumfield, which is the only orthodontic practice in the whole of the north area of Chelmsford, which means that patients have to travel right across town to London Road and Mulsham Street for orthodontics. So we're going to put in an orthodontic surgery, which I'm sure we would all agree is for the benefit of every Chelmsford resident. And in doing so, the time taken for orthodontic care is much longer than for general dentistry. So there's in fact, there'd be far less throughput of cars because the average treatment time for orthodontics is probably about thirty minutes. So as I see it, what we're doing by increasing NHS care has got to be for the benefit of the residents of Chelmsford. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We and the residents of Blacksmith Close and Anvil Way were strongly objected to this proposed planning application for the following reasons in no particular order. Parking on Blacksmith Close and Anvil Way is an ongoing problem with patients choosing to park on the surrounding roads rather than the car park. Even with the proposed changes to the car park, it will still not be enough for staff and patients. Regularly cars are parked on the corners of the road, which is dangerous, causing visibility problems for residents entering and exiting the estate. Also, emergency vehicles could have problems should they need to access the estate. Many times at the moment, there are more cars on the road than in the car park. Unfortunately, patients just seem to find it easier than using the surrounding roads in the car park. A significant number of cars not using the car park are large SUV-type vehicles and we feel that the small amount of additional car park space will not lead to any change in their parking habits. No evidence has been provided to back up the suggestion that patients will cycle and walk to the surgery. There is not usually a need for a large car park in a residential estate and this business premises and proposed application is an overdevelopment of an original site, a residential home. Our property in Anvil Way backs onto the dental surgery and this application will be built on the boundary of two-thirds of our garden. The two-story extension to the main building will be very close to our boundary fence with windows that will face into our. with windows that will face into our kitchen and conservatory. We moved into our property before the dentist was there. Original planning in 1994/95 stated no new windows were to be installed at the rear of the property to maintain our privacy, and this should be taken into account. The proposed extension coming further down the existing garden will be significantly closer to our house. This will almost definitely result in more noise pollution. Noise emanating from the dentist continues to be a problem. In the summer months, frequently, doors and windows are opened and we can hear consultations with patients and the noise from the machinery, in drills, compressors, etc. Machinery above background noise level should not be able to be heard at the boundary of any adjoining property, and as such, it is a statutory nuisance. All doors and windows to the rear and side nearest to our property are to remain closed at all times under the current conditions imposed by the council in 1995. Yes, yes. This has been ongoing for 25 years, and although the windows are constantly open, we continue having problems with this. We hope our neighbours and our views are taken into account when considering this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm here this evening to support comments that have been made on behalf of Springfield Parish Council and also the residents, particularly of Anvil Way and Blacksmith Close. The strength of feeling, as I think you all have heard and seen from the statements that have been submitted and spoken about tonight, are very strong. I myself have observed inconsiderate parking consistently within Anvil Way, and often when you drive past the dentist, the car park is empty. Whilst I accept that Highways have withdrawn their previous objections, I felt duty-bound to bring this to committee. One question that I do have is around the number of car parking spaces. So the proposal, whilst it will increase the size of the spaces, is actually to only increase the capacity by one. When I look on the Springfield Dentist website, there are 15 people appearing to be staff. There are going to be two more dentistry rooms that are going to be available, so that's going to be additional staff and additional patients coming in. So I would like to understand why an increase in one parking space is now seen as sufficient. I also noted that there was mention of a maximum of 36 spaces required for a development of this size. However, there was no reference to what the minimum would be, and I would be interested to understand what the minimum would be or why that has not been noted within the papers. I'd also like to request that if the application is accepted, there is a condition to make it very clear to visitors to the dentist that they are expected to park in the car park. Thank you.
So we had comments submitted from someone who didn't appear tonight, and I had prepared a response to those comments, if that's okay to go first. So as mentioned within the presentation, the car park in its current state is not being used fully, and the space is left empty often, as you've experienced yourself. This is due to the car park in base sizes, and it's just simply not enough for the vehicles that are using the dentist. It's contributing to all the on-street parking. The rearrangement should work to provide the car parking bays, which would be then accessible and usable for the staff and the customers, and reduce on-street parking going forward. They'd also commented on the cycle bays as an alternative to reasonable parking provisions. The provision of the cycle bays is an added benefit of the scheme. It's to encourage sustainable transport. Having the new bike storage in place will be the first step to promoting that. The cycle parking isn't an alternative to the working parking layout, it's an addition to the improvements of the car park. I think that covered their main queries. For the response to the residents at the back, yeah, again, as mentioned within the presentation, the approval would include conditions to obscure glazed windows to the rear at high level, as well as restricting opening hours during the operational hours, which will also work as soundproofing. There's also a condition for soundproofing to the plant room to overcome any concerns of overlooking and unacceptable impacts to the neighbours. Our conditions that have been put on will cover those concerns there. The previous... Sorry, the previous conditions that related to windows on the 1994 application, those related to certain parts of the surgery, and only when they were in use were those relevant, so it was harder to enforce. This condition has been made to enforce all durational hours during operational hours, so it's just covering everything this time round. I don't know whether Emma wants to answer the no minimum part?
So... It seems a bit weird standing up. So in terms of maximum-minimum parking standards, with destinations such as clinics, medical centres, they are a maximum standard. We'd have minimum standards on residential, but generally maximum standards, so there is no minimum for it, and it's just whether it would be likely to be acceptable. But I think, I would just reiterate, the current arrangement of the parking on the site is very poor. They are very narrow bays, and we know from all the work we've done on parking standards in the past and looking when we actually went from a standard base size of 2.4 by 4.8 and increased the base size to 2.5 by five metres. We did a lot of work then, and people don't like using small parking bays, they don't like using it. So we are quite confident that with this rearrangement of the parking, with the enlarged bays to the sizes they should be, that should be a lot more successful. I know my colleague who dealt with this application from my team, he's been out on site numerous times to look at the car park, and each time, it was not used to its maximum. And I think it's just because certainly, I think SUVs were mentioned, you know, people can't physically fit their cars in the sized bays that are provided. So we are fairly assured that the revised parking layout should relieve the parking issues that are currently there, even taking into account the additional consulting rooms and additional usage.
So, councillor Tron, you also raised the condition that you would like attached. That's something that we wouldn't be able to enforce, but we did receive a statement from the applicant and the agent today, past the green sheet, so it wasn't viewed by you guys, that was stating that they will hope to promote local services, including bus routes, because there is a bus route available on Pump Lane, cycle usage and taxis, but that is something that we couldn't get involved with in terms of planning and enforcing.
Thank you, let me just get my thoughts in order. First of all, I didn't quite understand the response to the point about an earlier planning permission not allowing certain things which are allowed under this one. If I did understand it correctly, it is that we're now looking at an enforceable condition to ensure that those windows are shut during business hours, and that conflicts with the fact that we're hearing that during hot days, windows are wide open and noise is coming from the building regardless of whatever condition might be there. So I raised that because it is an enforceability issue, and I think the residents, if this is to be passed, certainly deserve that reassurance that you would expect to see that condition enforced. On the matter of enforcement, you were saying that councillor Tron's request for a condition relating to alternative methods of transport couldn't be enforced. We seem to have not used the use of informatives very much these days. Is that because they've gone out of fashion? I would have thought a strong informative saying that those discussions that you mentioned would be taking place, and noting that the applicant is expected to participate in those discussions, would mirror the way that informatives work in other subject areas. Still on the subject of parking and adequacy and so on, clearly, I speak from personal experiences, having crashed the secondary treatment centre where I was, and crashed their vehicle into the side of a multi-story car park on one of my outings with the rest of the residents, that was not so good. So I do think that there will be a significant increase to use of the car park because of the improvements that are suggested. What I don't really have a sense of, though, is whether there's any statistical information at all about the number of patients that are normally there, not parked in the car park apparently, but parked around the corner or in neighbouring roads. Because even with improved transportation uses, we could expect the number of patients to be the same or higher than is previously the case, and we don't have, unless it was part of the Highways assessment, that we don't have an assessment of how many cars were inappropriately parked in the surrounding roads that you're hoping to overcome, and perhaps that could be addressed. And it was mentioned on that score that a previous objection by the Highways Authority had been overcome. Perhaps we could just have that summarised for us, what the objection originally was and how it's been overcome. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry councillor Poley. So the previous application, it related, like I said, it related to the windows and how only when the technician was in use, then that was when the windows had to be closed. We've now linked it to the operational hours or during all operational hours, so it's then enforceable for us to get involved with. But if they were, say, using it for 20 minutes or so, our enforcement team wouldn't be able to pop out, go check it in that time and then come back. So this one will be enforceable, as it will be more of a lengthy duration of us to be able to investigate. We could add an informative to raise discussion of sustainable transport between us and the applicant, to promote that within the surgery. That's something that we could add to this permission. And I don't know whether, Emma, would you be able to? We don't... For the... For any overflow data?
Yeah, I can't really answer about the previous one. I'm afraid I didn't deal with this application. I don't think there is any data on the amount of overflow vehicles parking in the nearby roads, because obviously, it's really difficult to sort of look at that vehicle and determine what it's actually connected with. Yes, sorry, that's not very helpful, but...
Can I just add that the previous application, the rearrangement of the car park didn't actually increase the sizes of the bays, and it also included two spaces to the rear, which were difficult to manoeuvre, and there were highlighted problems about oversailing the footway and problems for pedestrians. But this application has resolved that now with a safe vehicle crossing to the rear of the property, so there were two issues on the previous application.
I understand the difficulty with statistics, of course, but maybe the surgery itself has an estimate of how many patients it expects to be seeing in the two types of surgery combined at any one time. Whether that's in the report, I'm sorry if I missed it completely, because one can make a guess that if there are, you know, 20 patients at any one time, then at least 10 of them are going to be in cars or something similar, like at least with a bit of guesswork, if one had that estimate by the practice.
That data is just not available to my knowledge, I'm sorry. I can't comment any further on that.
I have a similar query really to councillor Poley, which is, if we know, so councillor Tron told us the number of staff that we'd expect to be at the surgery, and then surely we know at least the number of surgery rooms, which would give us an idea of the number of people who'd be in there at any one time, but there'd also be presumably people waiting for the... who are coming next. So I feel like we could have those, you know, just at least the number of rooms that are, you know, in the surgery, and that would give us an idea of the number of people who might be there. Because I can see that the bays are... Now the bays will be bigger, they are much more likely to be used by people, but it still doesn't tell us whether there is an appropriate number of bays at the moment. That's still unclear to me, whether or not it's the right number of bays. I think the informative, we're talking about putting... talking about sustainable transport in there, also I think councillor Tron was asking for that we would, the surgery would be encouraging people to use their car park rather than the surrounding road, so could that also go into the informative? Thank you.
Sorry, we were just getting the surgery numbers. So... Yeah, so the proposed parking layout provides 22 spaces, as we've heard before. Currently, five staff come to the work by public transport, walk or cycle; two staff car-share; a third of three staff travel to work by car. Staff therefore require four spaces, which leaves the 18 spaces available for patients. In total, there's eight treatment rooms, including those proposed. In the unlikely event that all rooms are in use at the same time, and that all eight patients arrive by car, and the next eight patients arrive at the same time and all by car, that would require 16 spaces. As mentioned, 18 spaces are actually available. Sorry.
Thank you. A slightly hypothetical question. Essex Parking Standard suggesting the maximum spaces would be 36 for a facility of this size. So is that suggesting that if there were 37 spaces, Highways would be recommending for refusal? I'm confused on that. It doesn't make sense.
You'd use it as a bit of a guide, you'd look at it on a case-by-case basis. I mean, technically, yes, it would be over the parking provision, so there would be potential to refuse it. Would we actually refuse it? We'd probably be on a hiding to nothing and wouldn't get supported at appeal, so it's a case-by-case basis, really. Yeah, as you say, hypothetical, so...
Yeah, it's not a requirement. Thank you.
Chair, a final point. How large is the replacement tree going to be and where is it going to go? Please.
So we... Condition three on the report will have, will be for the full landscaping to come in, but as the block plan showed, I don't know if you can put that up?
Prompted to ask the question, Chair, I'm prompted to ask the question by the fact that there are so many new trees that have been planted near me that are about so high. I realise they get quite expensive, but it's justified.
That will be under the condition of what type of tree gets put in there. I can't speak for the size, but there's roughly about three replacement trees for that one that's been removed.
Thanks, Chair. We're talking about a planning application who's spent a great deal of time on parking, and guessing resident permit parking on those streets is an available option to almost force people into using the facilities that have been made available to them?
So at this time, we wouldn't seek to restrict that, but... So, at this time, we wouldn't seek to restrict that, but residents are able to make an application to the South Essex Parking Partnership to encourage restrictions on those roads and then it'll be dealt with under their application and whether that's reasonable in those areas, so. Yes, we can add an informative to request or encourage sustainable transport as well as the car parking within the car parking areas.